Well, good evening. Certainly want to thank everyone for attending tonight's public hearing regarding the proposed increases to the Columbus water sewer and stormwater rates. Thank you Department of Utilities for the presentation. Before I turn it over to Director Davies for comment and kind of leading the discussion on utilities and about these proposed rates, I'd like to outline a couple of things that I'd like to see the Utilities Department address during this hearing. The first is, you know, how we came about with this rate increase. The second is, like, why we're increasing the rates? Because I have a concern anytime that we increase fees or rates in the city of Columbus about folks on fixed incomes in particular and how those rate increases affect folks on fixed income who, by their very definition of being on a fixed income, a rate increase, regardless of how significant any rate increase, really can hit their pocketbook. And so the third thing, I believe I'm on number three, is, you know, those folks that are struggling to make ends meet, what does the city do to help alleviate that pressure? What programs are available? And I'm hoping between the Director and Mr. Lombardi that we'll be able to be able to hit the nail on the head and address those issues to answer the questions that I have and as well as educate the general public on what is available out there. So I'd like this time I'd turn it over to you, Director Davies.
Chairman Klein, thank you very much for the opportunity to present our proposed rates. To answer your first question about how we came to be here, this is an annual process that we do every year. We have a Sewer and Water Advisory Board, and Mr. Giffen, who is our Chair, Wallace Giffen, will be speaking later. We also have Steve Gladman in the audience, who is a member of our board. And that board also consists of Auditor Hugh Dorian and Finance Director Paul Rakoski. And then we have representatives from the suburbs, low-income neighborhoods, large facilities, and we try to get the whole spectrum of our customers on that board. We met with the board five times this year and shared with them our projects, our costs, what we're doing, what we're working on, long-term projections. And then, Joe will get into this later, we obviously need to figure out what kind of money we're going to need moving forward, and we take that very serious. As you know, in the past, we've entered into two large consent decrees on the sewer side with the Ohio EPA, and we have billions of dollars that we are required to spend over the next 30, 40 years. And we got out in front of that very early, in 2004, 2005. Had some very large rate increases in the middle of that decade, over 15 percent at some times. This year, we're requesting 2.9, which while certainly is an increase, we're very happy given the amount of work that we're doing. And again, Joe will get into that. We do have a low-income and senior discount program that Joe will also provide details for. And so at this time, I will turn it over and obviously answer any questions you may have or anyone from the audience, and appreciate the opportunity to share this with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein, for the opportunity to present our rate adjustments for 2015. The Department of Public Utilities provides excellent and dependable drinking water, wastewater treatment, and stormwater management and street lighting services to residents and businesses throughout the Columbus area. Our current rates are designed to pay for our operations and maintenance, those things such as personnel, supplies, services, and debt service as well, as capital improvement program to meet our regulatory requirements, current ones and future requirements, and also to enable us to have routine maintenance on the current infrastructure that is throughout the city. We believe that a well-maintained utility system provides our community with a benefit and advantage in the marketplace when companies want to compete for jobs. And as Director Davies had indicated, we will continue to offer the 20 percent low-income discount program in 2015, and we'll get more into that as the presentation goes on. The information that I'm going to present this evening, as Director Davies said, is a culmination of five meetings with the Sewer and Water Advisory Board. During those meetings, we talk about the CIP projects. We also talk about the operating budgets for the three divisions. And then we present to them what our rate adjustments will be needed for the year coming up, the fiscal year coming up. And those are approved and reviewed by the board. It must be unanimous approval by the board for us to continue on, and then City Council has the final authority of the approval of those rate increases. As I indicated, the revenue requirements are projected to meet capital and operating expenditures for the fiscal year 2015. Those O&M expenditures include supplies, personnel, services, and debt service. The capital expenditures are necessary to meet the current and future regulations as well as to maintain our infrastructure and our plants and under the ground as well. All the expenditures, because we are an enterprise fund, are funded through user fees. There are no tax dollars used for any of the expenses in public utilities. The division of, the operations and management budgets proposed for 2015, which still have not been approved by City Council. The Division of Water has an O&M increase of 1.3 percent. The debt service for that division represents 44 percent of their O&M expenditures. The Division of Sewers and Drainage, their O&M increase is 1.7 percent for 2015. Their debt service represents 57 percent of their O&M expenditures. Stormwater had an increase of 8 percent in their O&M. The majority of that increase is a $1.3 million over 2014 for additional snow and ice removal services, which we provide to the city to help the Department of Public Service when needed during snow emergencies or snowfall. If those estimates come from the Public Service Department, if they were on par with the prior year, we were only looking at a 1.9 percent increase in the O&M budget. Their debt service represents about 38 percent of their O&M expenditures. I'd like to speak about each division briefly. The Division of Water provides drinking water to an estimated 1.1 million people throughout the Columbus area. The Division operates three plants, about 37 storage tanks, 25 pump stations, and four reservoirs. The Division is also responsible for 2,500 miles of water mains and 1,000 miles of water mains in contracted areas, suburbs, and also have to maintain 25,000 fire hydrants throughout the city of Columbus. Their capital improvement program for the next five years is an estimated $512 million. The majority of that, 135 million, will go to upgrade our water plants and our 910 utilities complex. These treatment upgrades include meeting new regulations that are coming, which will also provide new options for treating the water, which will help us with issues such as algae, also other nutrients that are in the water system. We're also increasing the security and standby power at our plants. Our water main and rehabilitation replacement, next largest, about 131 million. We also have money in that CIP for automatic meter reading, about 20 million. And the South Well Field improvements, about 30, almost $31 million in the five-year capital plan.
Mr. Lombardi, go back a slide, please. On the proposed $512 million expenditure, is the rate increase, the proposed rate increase of 2.9 percent, is that determinative to get to the number of 512 because that's the anticipated expenditures that are necessary for utilities over the next five years?
No, the rate increase that we're speaking of this evening will be for 2015. However, in our 10-year projections, we do put estimated rates that we think we will need to-
To cover this over the next five years?
Yes, sir. The Division of Sewers and Drains promotes healthy and safety to our residents through effective and environmental treatment of our wastewater. The Division operates two wastewater treatment plants, a compost facility, and 27 sanitary pump stations. It also maintains a seven miles of flood wall and approximately 5,000 miles of pipe and inspect 100 miles and cleans nearly 500 miles of pipe each year. As we had indicated earlier, oh, sorry about that. As we indicated earlier, the Division of Sewers and Drains is under two consent orders for sanitary overflows and combined sewer overflows. Both of those were submitted in July of 2005. To date, the department has met all required deadlines of the consent orders and the wet weather management program.
Mr. Lombardi, is, when you say under consent order, is that an order by a federal judge that requires us to act in a certain way?
It is under the State of Ohio EPA.
State of Ohio EPA?
Yes, yes. We are under state consent orders, not federal.
Okay, so it's a state consent order that requires us to build out infrastructure necessary to address these environmental concerns?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
A new program that we have embarked on is the Blueprint Columbus Program. This is a gray-to-green approach to our wet weather issues. In 2012, we approached the Ohio EPA to approve a pilot program. As you're well aware, one of the largest construction projects we have is the Oars Tunnel, which is a four-and-a-half-mile tunnel that will run from our Jackson Pike wastewater treatment plant on the south side and into downtown Columbus. We felt that the Blueprint Columbus Program would benefit the consent orders more than tunnels would, and we asked for approval of us to look at a pilot program. And so in 2012, the Ohio EPA granted us approval to try some pilot programs, because the plan addresses the problem and not just the symptoms. The current program areas are Clintonville, Linden, and Barthman Parsons. We have engaged the community through a community advisory panel. We've also been in the neighborhood engagement, and we have a traveling education program as well. We have to submit an affordability analysis and a program to the Ohio EPA in September of 2015 for approval to move forward with this gray-to-green approach to our wet weather issues that we face. The CIP, or the Capital Improvement Program, for the next five years for the Division of Sewers and Drains is estimated at $1.14 billion. The largest portion of that is about $272 million for the Blueprint Columbus Program. Blueprint Columbus lining is part of that program. What that is, is to do slip lining into the pipes. It's almost to put a cover within the pipe to seal up any leaks or cracks so that we don't have to take out the pipe, we can actually fix it. Another large project is taking our biosolids and putting them in as part of land application in farms. And the Big Walnut Rick and Barker Interceptor, $80 million as well as in that five-year program. And we believe that the blueprint, not only will it help us resolve the issues, it will also help the community through rain gardens and porous pavement, things of that nature. The stormwater section provides effective stormwater collection and management within the corporate limits of Columbus. There's challenging regulations that we believe are coming, which will be more emphasis on green infrastructure and retrofitting any existing developed areas. And with stormwater, the charges for the stormwater fee are only to citizens within the city of Columbus. The outside-city customers are not charged a stormwater fee. Those fees are only for inside-city customers only.
What's the historical reason for that? Do you know, Mr. Lombardi, or Director Davies?
The suburbs and other communities are responsible for their own stormwater, so they take care of it and bill for it.
So they're billed by their individual subdivision?
That's correct.
Okay.
The Capital Improvement Program over the next five years for stormwater is approximately $37 million. As you can see, the majority of that is to mitigate the stormwater runoff and to improve the water quality of our streams and rivers. The Department's environmental stewardship programs include Blueprint Columbus, our contract with Morpse for their Greenways Program. We also contract with the Franklin Soil Water Conservation for Rain Barrel Program and youth education programs. We've embarked in the Septic Tank Elimination Program, better known as STEP. We've also found alternate uses for our biosolids. We continue to look at our watershed management program. We've just recently been certified in, about two weeks ago, for environmental management program. We were certified for the ISO 14001 for environmental management program at our department. Just recently, we got the certification for that. That just helps us know how to handle any environmental issues that we may have in and around our facilities. And we also, as we indicated earlier, have a compost facility which makes a product called ComTil, which I'm sure a lot of customers in the city use for their gardens and their plant beds. As we indicated, we will continue the low-income discount program. The program discounts 20 percent of the water and sewer commodity charge. Some of the programs that would qualify a customer would be food stamps, HEEP, Medicaid, and other state or federal low-income programs.
Mr. Lombardi, just, I want to, as we go through these, I want to just kind of focus on them individually. The 20 percent discount on water and sewer commodity, to be eligible for that, you're saying that if you're receiving food stamps, you're on HEEP, you're on Medicaid, that you would trigger this 20 percent discount, that you are eligible for it?
That's correct. We have an application process. You can get that application off of our website, and there's other opportunities for customers to get those applications and submit it to us and-
Can they call a number? Because I know a lot of people on fixed income may not have access to Internet to get it on the website. What number can they call?
Sure, they can call my number, it's 645-6623.
6623, 645-6623, okay. And then, will you be able to point them in the direction when it says other state and federal low-income programs?
Yes.
Probably too many to list here, but there's other qualifiers as well?
Exactly. We would get them in contact with the correct people in our department-
Okay.
-to help them. We also offer a discount to our senior citizens aged 60 and older. And again, these are based on federal poverty levels. Not only would they get the 20 percent discount on the water and sewer commodity charge, we also waive the service charge, that is, their meter charge, as we would call it, is also waived for that program. And again, it's part of an application process, and that is available to those senior citizens that are 60 and older.
60 and older and at some level of AMI for the poverty level?
That is correct.
The average median income in the Columbus area?
That is correct.
Okay.
And Chairman, just real quick, we're also in the process of updating, we have an affordability analysis that we do, that we did originally when we embarked on this, because one of our arguments to the state EPA was, it's great that we have to do all this, but it's very, very expensive, and we need as much time as possible to spread this out. And what we're doing is updating that to make sure that we're not out of whack with what people can afford. And if we need to, we will go back and open up negotiations with the agency to make sure that, you know, we're not putting an unfair burden on our customers.
And I appreciate you sharing that, because as I stated at the outset, these things are obviously very important, required to do them under state law and the consent agreed by the state judge. Obviously, we appreciate clean drinking water, especially what happened in Toledo. You take it for granted, and the next thing you know, you don't have any drinking water. But you have to always balance that with folks that can't afford to pay the bills for no fault of their own, that worked hard their whole entire life, and, you know, struggling to make ends meet on maybe a fixed pension or social security, or a little bit of both. So it's important to know, I think, that if these rate increases, I think, generally are reasonable compared to historic rate increases of, say, 12.5 percent in 2008. But still, it hurts the pocketbooks of some folks in that if this does get out of whack, I mean, it's $2 billion worth of investments roughly over the next five years. That's a lot of money, $2 billion, that we have the ability to engage in a dialogue with the folks that are holding us accountable at the state EPA to say, you know, look, like, these are hurting the pocketbooks of folks in the city of Columbus. And I appreciate you sharing that information with me. Thank you.
Absolutely. And also just stating the obvious, we're not alone. Every utility provider across the country is dealing with the same regulatory implications that we're dealing with, and actually, we're probably five, 10 years ahead of most in getting started, so we feel pretty good about it.
Part of our outreach for the low-income and senior discount, we do have inserts and bills to all of our customers. We also have that information available at our recreation and senior centers, the Franklin County Jobs and Family Services, our website, and other social service agencies also have the information. We do send out annual renewal letters to those customers that are currently on the program. And when we have various events, we will bring those program highlights with us as well as applications. So we do a lot of outreach to try to promote the program and help those that, as you had indicated, may need some help with the bills. So through, again, through the five meetings with the Sewer and Water Advisory Board and looking over all of our budget requirements for 2015, the proposed rate adjustments would be, for 2015, would be a 3 percent for the water portion of the bill, 3 percent for the sewer portion of the bill, and 1 percent for stormwater. When you combine all those into one bill for an average residential bill inside the city of Columbus, it is 2.89 percent increase. An average estimated quarterly bill would increase about $7.28. We base our average quarterly consumption on 30 CCF a quarter. That's basically a household of four individuals. And there, obviously, you know, if it's less CCF than, but we base everything off of 30, 30 CCF, and the combination of those three rates come to a residential bill inside the city, 2.89 percent. If you look at the outside-the-city, the average estimated residential bill would go, or the inside-city, I'm sorry, the inside-city average residential bill quarterly increase is 252 to 259. The average estimated residential quarterly bill increase would be from 276 to 284. And the average low-income customer would go from 212 to 218. And again, these are all based on 30 CCF households of four. When you look at our comparison to some of the larger cities within our country, in 2013, if you notice, we are toward the bottom with St. Louis, Louisville, Philadelphia, and Pittsburgh having rates lower than the city of Columbus in 2013. When you look at the current rates, the 2014 rates, which we're still not out of the fiscal year yet, you notice that the Philadelphia and Pittsburgh are now higher than the city of Columbus, and this is current rates. We spoke with a consultant firm that helps us with rate studies, and we asked what they thought of 2015, and because some of these cities have not set their rates yet, on a napkin, he said we should be even better looking at next year. He's looking to, St. Louis is probably getting into their consent orders, and we'll soon start seeing higher increases in their bills. So this is where we stand in comparison to some of the larger cities throughout the United States of America. Once again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on our rates, and if there's any questions from yourself or from the view, or from the audience, we'll be willing to take it.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. I think it's, I appreciate the presentation. And I know you gave out a number that's directly your line. Do you think the call center line may be a better approach? If folks have questions-
Probably better.
Yeah, the call center line is 645-8276. 645-8276. I mean, feel free to call Mr. Lombardi, but the general call center line may be the more appropriate approach in addressing some of these issues.
Thank you.
Director Davies, before, I do have one speaker. Do you have any comments before I turn it over to the speaker?
I do not, thank you.
Our speaker is Mahdi Grace. Come on forward. Thanks for coming down to counsel and the hearing. You just step right up, and if you just could restate your name for the record, your address, if you represent anyone or just yourself, that's fine, and you have three minutes to talk. Thank you for coming.
Okay, my name is Mahdi Grace, and I, I'm speaking for myself as well as the south side because that's where I live. And you said upcoming rate increases. My water bill increased this time, so what is the upcoming rate going to be? Because I was paying like 90-some dollars before, and this month, I got one for over 120-some dollars. So what is that difference when there's only two of us in the household, and we've cut back on the washing and the showering and everything else? And I don't understand how it could be an upcoming rate if I've already been increased. Plus, we're not talking about just water. Gas is going up, and electric. And somehow, we're supposed to deal with this, and I'm a senior, I'm 65, and I'm on a fixed income. Now, if you want to give me a job, or you, you know, we need some type of regulation. We need someone looking out for us, such as yourself, trying to keep these bills down because there's no way we can officially or unofficially continue to dole out money that we don't receive. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Grace. A couple of general comments. These are, this hearing is about a rate that will take, increase of, the proposal is 2.9 percent that will take in effect in January of 2015. All right, so in January 2014, so this calendar year, the rate increase was 1.1 percent. To address the increase of your water bill this most recent quarter from 90 to 120 dollars, I'm going to ask Ms. O'Grady, who works with the Department of Public Utilities, to work with you, because clearly there was a consumption issue. It has nothing to do with this hearing. There was maybe a bill that was read incorrectly, or maybe an adjustment that needed to be made. I obviously don't know your personal circumstances, but as far as the 2.9 percent that's being proposed for this upcoming calendar year in 2015, it is nothing to do with why your bill was 90, one quarter, and 120 dollars the next quarter. I don't know what the reason that is, but Ms. O'Grady can help you address that issue. So if Ms. O'Grady, you could help her with that, I'd appreciate it. But I, as I stated earlier, find your point very valuable of being mindful that these rate increases, while, you know, puts us in competitiveness and better than St. Louis or Philly, it's still money out of people's pockets. So it's a great story to tell, but we have to be sensitive to the fact that there's thousands of Mrs. Graces out there that are struggling to pay their bills. So thank you for coming down. I don't have any closing comments. I think we've talked about it. Director Davies, you want to maybe close us out here?
I think Mr. Giffen wanted to-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry. The Chair of the Sewer and Water Advisory Board, Mr. Griffin, so please come on down. Thank you, Mr. Giffen, for being here.
Thank you, Councilman Klein. You probably should have in front of you a letter under my name. On behalf of the Sewer and Water Advisory Board, members of the Sewer and Water Advisory Board meet with representatives from the Department of Public Utilities five- Board meet with representatives from the Department of Public Utilities five times, met five times in 2014, to review and discuss the operations and project planning activities of the water, sewer, and stormwater enterprises. At our September 24th meeting, we reviewed proposed water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater rates. The board approved the following rate recommendations effective January 1, 2015. For the fiscal year 2015, the board recommends an increase in sanitary sewer rates of 3 percent. I'm making a side here that maintenance and operations have tended to be fairly level in costs over recent years. It's the capital projects that are often driven by consent order and so forth that are driving us to see that more funding is needed. Water and sewer rates, 3 percent, water rates, 3 percent, stormwater rates at 1 percent. When considered together, the bill impact on the average residential customer within the city of Columbus is 2.89 percent. Furthermore, to address higher-than-normal extra-strength charges and to remain economically competitive, the board also approved the recommendation of decreasing the TKN extra-strength charges by 10 percent for our industrial customers. The board recommends continuing the sewer charge within the sanitary sewer rates, known as the Clean River Fee, to support payment of expenses related to construction of projects mandated by the consent orders entered into to eliminate combined sewer and sanitary sewer overflows. This charge is based on measured impervious surface areas. This equivalent residential unit, ERU, equals 2,000 square feet of impervious surface area. Impervious means will absorb the water. And each, each, sorry, will not absorb water, sorry. And each residential customer, both inside and outside the city, is billed one ERU per Commercial and industrial customers are charged based on actual measured impervious areas. The board also recommends continuing the low-income discount for water and sanitary sewer commodity charges at 20 percent. Low-income customers are defined as being at 150 percent of the federal poverty level or qualifying for a state low-income program. The Department of Public Utilities is continuing an aggressive outreach effort to identify customers that have not taken advantage of the low-income program. Lastly, the board recommends that no increase for sewer and water capacity charges for 2015. Those are the charges you pay to hook up to the service for the first time. The board feels that the rate adjustments are fair and equitable and are necessary to provide the funding to support the day-to-day operations of the division as well as continuing to support a critical and sizable capital improvement program within the Department of Public Utilities. As always, the board will work with the public utilities staff to ensure that future rate increases are minimized to the extent possible. If you or other city council members have any questions or would like to discuss these issues, feel free to contact me at the number given here. Personally, I also would like, again, to commend the professionalism and the fiscal management of the Utilities Division. We are impressed with all of the pressures that are upon to meet government standards and everything else, and we have capacity available and have a system that's reliable that our people tend to be very much ahead of the game. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giffen, for sharing that. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Steve Gladman, and he's a member of the board as well. Are there any other board members here that deserve recognition? No, all right. Well, certainly thank to the board-
Yeah, thank you.
... for the volunteer work that you do and coming up and assisting the city in the determination of these proposed rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any closing comments to Mr. Lombardi or to Director Davies? Okay, well, that concludes the hearing. I appreciate everyone's attention. I want to thank Ms. Grace for coming down. Thank you so much. Have a great night. Thanks.